All right, Beth, roll call, please.
Sure. Commissioner Schlangen here. Commissioner Heinem.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Kapinski.
Here.
Commissioner Pop.
Here.
All right, move on to approval of our amendments to our agenda. Monty, any changes?
Mr. Sheriff, we could add consent item number four. This would be the Sock Rapid Sportsman's Club gambling permit. You also have on the dais, this is just subtle information that goes with Troy's Motorola item. Also too, if we could please, could we move the, the public hearing for Roxanne? It's currently slotted at nine ten. Could we please move that to after, after Chris Byrd's nine thirty item? If we could please do that. Roxanne would like to move that till a bit later in the meeting if possible.
Okay. Okay, any other changes? All right.
Motion to approve with the noted changes.
Second.
A motion second to approve our amended agendas. Are there any other discussion? Hearing not all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, it's carried. County board meetings are broadcast live and video recorded on YouTube. Please refrain from speaking from the audience area and come to the podium so that viewers can hear you. County board observes Roberts rules of order for its meetings, so please obtain the board chair's consent before addressing the county board. Public comments are generally reserved for the open forum segment or public hearings. However, public comment on other agenda items may be allowed at the discretion of the board chair. As we begin today, please turn off all your cell phones or put them on vibrate. Thank you. All right, open forum. Is there anyone here for open forum? Nothing? Okay, thank you. All right, move on to consent agenda items one through four now.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion a second to approve consent agenda items one through four. Any other discussion? Hearing not all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed, it's carried. Move on to your county sheriff, Troy Heck.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have a contract before you for some services we wish to enter into with Motorola. Just to give you a little bit of background, nineteen ninety-six was much simpler time, I'm sure we can all agree. The, we were just learning about a young golfer named Tiger Woods. Cell phones were a rarity and the Benton County Sheriff's Office was building a new facility across the highway. As part of that build, we purchased a piece of equipment that sat in the back room of the dispatch center. And the job of this large box was to take all the incoming calls, whether they be administrative calls or nine one one calls, and present them to our dispatchers as they sit at their stations with their computers. So, you know, we don't have an actual telephone in the, in the dispatch center. We purchased that in nineteen ninety-six and that large, very expensive box sat in that back room and hummed along for almost twenty years doing, doing yeoman's work. And after about twenty years or so, we got notice from the company that said, you really gotta replace that box. We're done servicing it. We've moved on to new equipment. So we went through RFP process, we solicited bids, and we picked a piece of equipment called the Viper. At the time, we, it was, it was about a hundred and thirty, a hundred and fifty thousand dollar investment that we made to lift up the old box, take that out and put in a new box. At that time, it was my hope that I might never have to deal with that again. But, technology, as we all know, kind of cuts both ways. This, this new box that we have in there did a lot more things, had a lot more functionality. Unfortunately, it's now all IP-based and it's computer-based and there's switches and all kinds of computer things back there. So after about seven years of having that box back there, the Lumen came to us, the company that supplied then, said, yeah, you know that box you got sitting back there? It's seven years old and in computer terms, it is a dinosaur. So you need to replace all of it because the switches and the computers and the things that blink, they're all wearing out. So we got the upgrade quote from Lumen and when they came back, you know, most times when an upgrade quote comes back, it's a fraction of the purchase price. Well, it came back at almost exactly the same to repurchase this box because, again, switches, blinky things, they all gotta go and new stuff has to come in. When we got that quote, we decided to go up for bids and see if this is really the direction we wanted to go. There are several vendors that supply this equipment. After gathering some bids and finding that in addition to having a, a box, a, a machine in your dispatch center, now there is technology available that says the service is hosted somewhere else. So there are redundant servers throughout the state that these various companies will offer you access to through a service model. And in this model, the company that you are paying this, for the service, they maintain their boxes and you simply pay for the service and the connection to it. Given the rapid pace that these boxes are having to go through to, to exchange and stay on top of current technology, we decided in reviewing the costs and the benefits over the life of a new box that we'd put in here versus the lifetime, that same lifetime of getting these services, it made more sense to go with the service model. So what I have before you is a contract that proposes we would enter into this agreement with Motorola and we would purchase from them these call processing services. So again, they would have their machines at, at distant locations in the state and they would use elect, the internet and other connective networks to bring those calls to us, putting on them the burden of keeping that machine up to date. The, the contract, as you'll note, from Michelle Myers' memo, has some things that they, that Motorola would not agree to that we wanted. I don't believe that any of these are necessarily deal breakers. We've, we've negotiated them to the best of our, the most favorable terms we could get. But I, I believe overall that going with this service model is going to be advantageous to Benton County over the next five to seven years when compared to actually purchasing a new box that's gonna sit here that we're gonna have to replace. So with that, I'd be happy to field any questions that the board may have.
First, you gotta understand it, right, Commissioner Kapinski?
That's right. Well, Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Is this, is this cost all paid for upfront or is it yearly, divided out yearly?
We can make payments over the five-year contract. I noted that there is incentive for us to pay it all upfront. My proposal would be to pay it all upfront since it's coming from E nine one one funds and we have, we have enough in that fund and we, we might as well pay it upfront and take advantage of the cost savings because the contract is gonna require us to stay with this service for five years or pay a penalty.
Mr. Chair, do you know what percentage of savings there would be by paying it upfront?
My recollection is that it would save us about five thousand dollars over the life of the contract.
Fifty-two twenty.
Fifty-two twenty.
So that's less than five percent.
Well, it's about five percent.
Yeah, about five percent.
Okay, any other comments, questions with Sheriff?
Everything these days is going to the cloud or remote, so this is just another technology.
And again, Sheriff, just reviewing Michelle's comments, no deal breaker concerns here for you.
Correct.
All right.
Motion to approve the contract with Motorola for Vista Services and direct the chair to sign.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve this contract with Motorola for Vista Services. Any other comments, questions?
Well, I got one.
So how much, do we have more than that amount in our E nine one one funds?
Yes, so I checked the balance last week. Our balance is at about six hundred thirty-five thousand currently.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, and just for clarification, that can only be used for dispatch nine one one equipment, correct?
Yes, yeah. There's, there's a few caveats to that, but yeah, it generally has to be used in our dispatch center or in the process of getting calls sent out to our first responders.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, it's carried. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We're about ten minutes early here on human services.
How about going to Chris's items? I see he's here.
All right, Chris, I'd be okay with you?
Sure.
Okay.
Well, good morning, commissioners. And don't worry, when we're ahead of schedule, you can always count on me to get us back there.
We could still cut you off, though.
Well, my first item is a proclamation to declare July seventeenth through twenty-first as Rural Road Safety Awareness Week. And I will bring this up. I wanted to bring something up. So the proclamation reads, whereas what speeds got to do with it is the theme for the two thousand and twenty-three Rural Road Safety Awareness Week. And whereas according to the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, in two thousand and twenty, of the sixteen thousand six hundred and sixty-five rural traffic fatalities, now that is nationwide, but they're rural roads outside of metropolitan areas, four thousand seven hundred and seventeen, or twenty-eight percent, were killed in speeding-related crashes. And whereas we call on all road users to do their part in promoting safe driving habits, this includes being mindful of their own driving speeds, reminding others to avoid speeding, and supporting initiatives aimed at reducing speeding-related crashes. And whereas we also encourage jurisdictional and local governments to take steps to decrease the dangers of speeding on rural roads, this may include increasing awareness through public service announcements, reducing speeds on high-risk roads, increasing enforcement efforts and installing warning signs in high-risk areas. And whereas we recognize the critical role technology can play in reducing speeding-related crashes, we urge jurisdictional and local transportation agencies to explore rural intelligent transportation system tools that address speed, such as speed warning systems. And where in conclusion, we iterate that the safety of our citizens is our top priority. By working together and taking a proactive approach to reducing speeding on rural roads, we can prevent needless fatalities and injuries and create a safer and more secure future for all Americans. Now therefore be it resolved that the Benton County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim July seventeenth through twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-three Rural Road Safety Awareness Week in Benton County. We encourage all Benton County residents and those that travel within the county to commit to slowing down and practicing safe driving habits. This year, this, this Rural Road Safety Coalition is a, is a group that I follow on social media. And this year, it kind of struck me because there's been some severe crashes recently in Benton County. And I just know from my own personal experience that speeding is kind of becoming an issue. It just seems like drivers in general are driving faster. I think many people don't realize that there is a statutory speed limit and that we don't post, because we don't have to. Speed limits, when state law says rural two-lane roads, the speed limit is fifty-five miles an hour. And it seems like it's hard pressed to find somebody obeying that speed limit nowadays, so. I just wanted to bring awareness to this and I think this week, I'm gonna do a concentrated effort on our social media pages to put out public service announcements on some things that related to rural road safety and, and crash statistics. So I gathered some statistics here for today's meeting that I wanted to, to share with everybody. So in two thousand and twenty-two, for the entire year, there was four hundred and forty-three documented crashes in Benton County. And I say that documented means that we have a, a crash report that was completed by law enforcement. As you can see there, the most of them, two hundred and ninety-two, were property damaged. I mean, nobody was injured, but there was either a vehicle that was damaged or personal property, whether it's a mailbox, signpost, guard rail, something like that on our roads. What's really concerning though is that there was three fatalities and another twenty-five serious injuries. Meaning when they left the scene, they were, had either deceased or suffered a severe injury and had to be transported by medical personnel. Another one that's kind of concerning is that there's possible injuries, a large of those. You know, a lot of times people at a scene of an accident, they refuse medical treatment. But sometimes maybe the law enforcing agency suspects that there might have been injury, but they were refusing treatment. And so it's documented as such that they, there was no documented injuries, but could be possible. So this was for the whole year, four hundred and forty-three. Well, to date, maybe about halfway through the year, we're trending kind of similarly, in my opinion, as we were the previous year. We're about half the number of crashes we were for the whole year. One fatality documented so far, eleven serious injuries with a hundred and fifty-five crashes reporting property damage. So something that I think we all can work on. We do our part in engineering and I just was gonna highlight some of the safety things that we're trying to incorporate in our roadways. Last fall, I made a big, kind of a big deal about this because the federal highway administration is making a big deal about edge lines and center line markings. It's gonna become more important for us in the future to not only make sure that we have lines painted and in good condition, but at nighttime, they have meet-in minimum reflectivity so that when you, when your headlights reflect off of that, that they are above minimum and there's, there's ways to measure that. So you could see those, the center of the roadway and the edge of the roadway at night. Another thing that we do put up too, although we don't have very many curves in Benton County, we got a lot of straight and square roadways. We put up curve warning signs. And once again, I point out that these are kind of based on statutory speed limits, again. And why sometimes for engineering, when the talk of raising speed limits is concerning, is because there's things like this that need to be considered. We, we design the placement of those curve warning signs based on that design speed or that statutory speed. If that increases, that may cause us to go back out there, reinstall signs, move them, put additional signing up. But here's just an example. This is Casson Nine down by the Sherburne County line. This is County Road Forty-nine coming into it. So you see the curve warning signs that we have placed on one of our rural roads. That's just one of the safety features that, that we've installed on our roads. Another thing that's becoming more unpopular, I mean, you start to, you've seen this on state highways and trunk highways for a while, but you see a lot of county highways starting to install more and more of these too. These center line and shoulder rumble strips. Where's my statistic? So another thing that we're starting to learn too is in rural roads, like eighty-five percent of crashes are also due to leaving the roadway. And we classify those, either they cross the center line into the opposing lane of traffic or leave the roadway off of the shoulder. So center line and edge line rumble strips is another tool that we use to just notify drivers that you're, hey, you're starting to lean, leave your lane of traffic, you need to make an adjustment. Another thing that not very many people know of, that we put in all of our reclaim projects, reconstruction projects, overlay projects, is this safety edge. So the bituminous surface, we have a minimum that we've adopted that we're putting at least four inches down when we do a reclaim or reconstruction. But we, we are having the contractor install this, this safety edge and it's at thirty degrees or flatter. So we, and this is outside of the shoulder, even if there's a gravel shoulder or at the, well, there's always gonna be a gravel probably here. But over time, as that gravel may wash away or just natural traffic driving off of it, you have a, a more gentle slope for your tires to travel across and hopefully allow the driver to correct. Whereas before, the tendency was to just pave this as almost a near vertical or straight up and down. And when, if anybody's ever experienced driving a tire off the edge of pavement, it can be quite alarming and sometimes it's difficult to, to correct and get back on the roadway in a controlled manner. So this is another safety feature that we've incorporated in our design projects that in the absence of a shoulder or as gravel's, you know, pulls away from that, you've got a more gentle slope for drivers to correct and stay in their lane of traffic. There's just some more information on the, on what that looks like. So you can see there, the gravel shoulder kind of lays on top of that slope a little bit up to it as opposed to having a vertical edge. Another common thing that you'll see is what's generically referred to as roadside barriers. And this is simply like guard rail, whether it's the cable style guard rail, which, you know, Minnesota's putting a lot of that in the center line and that's been proven to reduce fatalities quite a bit. But, you know, the more common is this rigid styles, we call it, these guard rails. And we make a conscious effort every year to look at like bridge ends and make sure that we have guard rail that's up to standard. If you see any, what we call turned down guard rail, used to be common practice at the end of the guard rail, just kind of turned down and went down into the ground and kind of buried. That's no longer determined to be safe because cars can maybe have a tendency to ride up over that and then it doesn't prevent them from impacting that, that hazard or going over that, that hazard in the bridge. So modern guard rail is designed to actually take that impact and kind of, you hear a lot about in cars, crumple zones, but that guard rail is designed to absorb that energy and crumple up. So you may still, well, you're, you will have property damage to your vehicle if you impact one of those guard rails. You may even have serious injury. But the goal is that that guard rail is gonna prevent you from having a fatality. And that's something that as engineers, we, we, we gotta weigh out. Is that, that hazard more dangerous than what the guard rail is? Because most, most crashes do may result in, in injuries from hitting that. But if that guard rail wasn't there, it's most likely that could end up in a fatality. So those are just some safety features that I just wanted to highlight today and then we're gonna make a conscious effort this week to just to put some more public service announcements out there and maybe just bring more awareness to, to rural road safety and speeds and how we can all be, be safer. So if it pleases the board, I ask you to consider adopting this proclamation.
Mr. Chair, feels like a no-brainer to me. I'll, I'll move approval of making a proclamation for the week of July seventeenth for Rural Road Safety Awareness Week.
I'll second it. Any other discussion?
No, I just, I have a comment on the rumble strips. We never do rumble strips if we don't have an asphalted shoulder, correct?
Well, no, we're looking at that. That may be more of a reason why. Because then you've got a narrower paved surface to drive on. So you think about that, if you don't have a paved shoulder, your hazard is actually closer to the driving lane. So that may be an area where we more want to be putting more rumble strips in as opposed to a paved shoulder where you've got another four to six feet to maybe correct yourself if you're leaving your lane of traffic, so.
I know from experience that it's really tough on agriculture equipment when you don't have the, the paved shoulders because you either got the, the heavy equipment with the tire running on the rumble strips and it's really hard on, on tires.
I, I don't disagree, yeah. I think that's just a testament too to our whole transportation system, how industry has grown and our transportation system hasn't been able to keep up with, with the growth of, of industry. That's what we're really serving. And, yeah, that's a good point, so.
Rumble strips up in Morrison County cost me two tires and a rim on my disc.
Well, this gets back to our discussion in the past about ag equipment, does it agree, right?
Yeah.
As far as what's going on with the current transportation system.
To me, now, this is a personal opinion, but that's what the industry and what our users are demanding. And when we talk about transportation funding, there's still not enough funding to, to address all these issues. And we've talked about it and we will talk about it again, you know, our roads that don't have shoulders, we should probably be doing more to reconstruct our roadways and put those shoulders on there. Because that's what the traffic is kind of demanding nowadays, so. The only thing consolation I'll say is like, at least you know where the edge of the road is.
Yep.
Any other discussion on this proclamation? We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing not all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, it's carried. Thank you, Chris. Move on to calcium chloride policy.
Yeah, this was, well, everybody knows that we've had a hot, dry summer. So just like every other hot, dry summer, we get a lot of requests for calcium chloride. And I decided it was a good time to review our policy because things have changed in, in regards to cost. So it's been a longstanding policy. As you see there, this was adopted in two thousand and six. And the policy is that a landowner adjacent to a county gravel road is entitled to purchase up to six, six bags of calcium chloride and the county is subsidizing that cost at fifty percent. Policy does go on to say that, well, maybe I should say fifty percent plus a five percent for handling. And then here it says six and a half percent sales tax. Well, sales tax has increased since two thousand and six. So maybe that's something that's just worth updating the policy to reflect current sales tax. But it does go on to say that additional bags can be purchased at the full cost plus the five percent plus the sales tax. Another thing that is, not very many people know that, the policy does say that we could sell to townships and cities for the full cost plus five percent in the, the sales tax. Why I thought this was good to talk about now, last year, this is what a bag costs. And this is what the invoice looks like when we write up for a landowner. We're paying seventeen dollars per fifty-pound bag for us and then we, we credit them half that, eight and a half. So the total for six bags comes to about fifty-nine dollars. This year, from our vendor, the price has doubled. So it's now thirty-five dollars for a fifty-pound bag. So if we're, we're subsidizing that, it's, we're credit them seventeen and a half cents, but so six bags now is over a hundred dollars for treating that, so. It's, it's dry calcium chloride, you mix it with water. I think six bags would last, you know, a summer. It, it's about two hundred feet maybe is what it'll cover, but I think in a lot of cases that covers, you know, a good portion in front of everybody's driveway, maybe in front of their house. So that's what I just wanted to make that aware, what the policy is, what the current price would be. And then maybe just open it up for discussion if as commissioners, you see anything that you want to do differently. As far as the policy, I would recommend at least just maybe freshening it up just to say, maybe just say current sales tax rate so it's not locked into six and a half percent. But, yeah, just open it up if you see anything you want to do differently or, or open for discussion.
Chris, so we are subject to sales tax on that? Pay sales tax?
Yeah, so that's the price. The seventeen dollars per bag or the thirty-five dollars is just the price. So we pay, we have to pay, yeah, vendor, we're paying sales tax to it. And I think when we sell any material, I think what I understand law is requiring us to, if it's not for our own uses, we're required to say. if it's not for our own uses, we're required to say.
But, but how about when we're purchasing it?
In most instances, we would have an exemption, yes.
Yeah.
But again, this instance, we're reselling it.
But are we using any for our own purposes? I mean, are we reselling all of it is my point?
Yeah, we, we're not applying any of our, for our own. So we, we buy a pallet or two pallets and it's, it's, it's in our shed until somebody comes and, and buys it, so.
Okay, and so then we do have to charge it?
Yeah.
And so the handling fee just to kind of cover the gentleman's time to load it in the truck for the guy or what?
Yeah, and usually a lot of times we go have to go pick it up. We um, we're buying pretty small quantities, I guess, relatively speaking, so we either get it from Mimbach or in um from Gilman Co-op. And that was the thing, they even had difficulty acquiring it this year, so um, no doubt, I believe.
So it's basically been a service we provided to.
Correct, yeah. So, I mean, they could go buy it directly from those vendors in our county as well. They'd just be paying it at full price, so.
Sure.
Mr. Chair, so about how many requests do we have in a year?
So we'll probably, I don't know, I think we're, we're used, we're selling about a pallet a year, so.
Forty bags?
Uh, it's a little bit more than that, so.
Fifty bags?
Maybe, yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Mm-hmm.
I believe sales tax is over six and a half percent.
Yeah, he said they'd update it.
Yeah. Yeah, because the, the basic sales tax is six point eight seven five percent plus, you know, we've got the sales tax of transportation, so that'd be another half percent, yeah.
Yep.
So it'd be over seven percent.
I, I don't know how the rest of you feel. I'd say just get the policy updated to reflect the sales tax and.
And current pricing.
And current pricing, yeah.
Yeah. So it comes at budget time, so you, you expect to see our budget line item increased by uh twofold just to accommodate the, just to keep up with the current demand, so. I don't, yeah, I think demand's been pretty steady. If we don't change the policy, I don't anticipate the demand changing any. Uh, maybe it'll even go down when, when people realize it's now over, you know, a hundred bucks to, to do that. I think fifty dollars, people were okay paying that amount um to just, yeah, handle the dust. But I think just personally speaking, when it's over a hundred dollars, it, it makes you like second guess it a little bit sometimes, so.
Do you need a motion on this at all or you just need some consensus?
Maybe that would be good just to say, yeah, motion and a second saying to update it to current sales tax and, but keep the policy generally the same.
I'll make that move, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Any other discussion on updating the policy to reflect the current sales tax and the current pricing? Any other discussion? Hearing none of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it's carried. Okay, Chris, update.
All right, so yeah, it's a good time for an update. We're halfway through the year. On the construction side, uh, we were happy that Cassaw twenty-one and County Road fifty-six upside, outside of Rice did get paved. They got the base course last Friday, so before the holiday weekend, there was a hard surface for everybody to, to drive on. Um, they're back out there today. They're actually paving on fifty-six and the goal is to get fifty-six and twenty-one paved all the way up to the, the wear surface uh before this weekend. Um, it may be a push to get it done by Friday. If not Friday, they'll certainly, sounds like they'll be working on Saturday to finish paving. Um, that means right now there is milling happening on County Road sixty-two. Um, so we had designed that project to mill off two inches of the existing pavement and then grind and reclaim uh the remainder. That helps us with our, our profile changes a little bit since that road was already narrow. If we were at two inches, let's just drop it down a little bit, two inches and still uh maintain a sufficient width for, for two driving lanes and a, and a small one-foot shoulder on each side. So they'll be milling that this week and then following up probably beginning of next week with reclaiming that. And then that'll sit i- as gravel for a while. Once that miller, milling machine leaves County Road sixty-two, it's going to our Cassaw eight between forty-five and, and Highway ninety-five. And that looks like that'll be the next road that'll uh get overlaid, eh, because that's just going to be an overlay. Uh, and then after sixty-two is milled, um, they'll start milling and grinding. We'll grinding, it's not no milling, but just grinding and reclaiming on Cassaw one, two, uh, four uh and Ca- Cassaw fifteen. So there'll be a lot of reclaiming the rest of this month into the first part of August. Currently, we have a contractor out on Cassaw four replacing all the entrance pipe. All the entrance pipe have been replaced on uh Cassaw one, Magu Lake Road, so. Some residents that had paved driveways are dealing with a gravel driveway now, but we will be paving back all residential driveways as part of the reclaim project when that, that comes through. So we just ask that residents be patient for that a little bit. We understand it's an inconvenience, but um, uh, we'll give them uh a pretty good approach, probably better than what was there when we're done. That way everything ties in nice. On the maintenance side, um, one thing, a goal of ours is that we always get our top cut of mowing done by July fourth and we were able to get that completed Thursday of last week. So that's always a big milestone for us. Uh, just talking to a couple of operators that were mowing, they said this, it did seem to go faster. It says it does seem to be thinner this year. Uh, once again, no, no doubt impacted by the drought. And I think maybe because of the drought, we did see a lot of people uh mowing the ditches a- and collecting hay off of it. So we do allow people to do that when it's in front of their property. So if they've already mowed it, then that's just, we get through that area faster with our own tractors. So today and the remainder of this week, uh, we do have crews out uh adding gravel surface to County Road fifty-eight. And that'll, today's Wednesday already, so that's probably today, tomorrow. If they get done early tomorrow, um, County Road fourteen, Cassaw fourteen um from sixty-five going north, uh, that has an edge drop-off, so we're going to put gravel next to the bituminous pavement on that, so that's what they'll be doing next. Um, also for an update, uh, I don't know if everybody's heard, but we did receive word last week about our RACE grant. And we were unsuccessful. We received the, the Dear John letter, so to speak, uh, saying that uh we did not get that, that grant. But i- in, in the light of that, I was able to attend the Transportation Alliance uh grant workshop last week where I did hear from a presentation from the city of Morehead who had applied for these same grants. And the big thing I learned from his, him was to, to not give up. They were rejected eight times before finally receiving a grant on the ninth opportunity. Another thing I learned from him too is that when you, after you receive your notification that you did not receive the grant, they should reach out to the applicant and ask if we would like a debrief meeting. And he said, I very highly recommend you take that because they should go through you, what your application was lacking, uh, what you could have done better. Um, I don't know if you recall this from last fall, uh, with the RACE grant application, the cost benefit ratio is really important and it sounds like that's what they're using to either approve or deny these grant applications. They, uh, the US Department of Transportation wants to see projects that have a high benefit cost ratio, meaning the benefits outweigh the cost of the project. These presentations also talked about um hiring experts, as they say, which experts usually means consultant, to calculate that, in which we had, we did. We hired WSB to put that grant application for us. And I think we had a one-point-two, one-point-three cost benefit ratio. Well, what, what I learned also is like you, you, you hire this expert to put together this application, calculate this benefit cost ratio, you submit it to Federal Highway slash USDOT. Then they have their own team of experts that come in and they look at your application and then recalculate your benefit cost ratio. So that's why these debrief meetings are so important because they learn through this process of what they were saying was a benefit and calculating cost. USDOT said, yeah, you may like that, but that's not a benefit to us, so we subtracted those benefits out. So that's why it takes multiple iterations and I guess that's my advice is let's not get discouraged that we, we rejected once. Um, it does seem like those that are awarded money, you know, they, it's repeat offender, so to speak. They, they applied multiple times and maybe if you're just being pesky, they finally want to pay you off to stop bothering them.
Chris, when can you reapply?
Next year.
Or next year, be the same, same timeframe.
Full month intervals?
Yeah, mm-hmm, e- e- every year. It sounds like this is, this is part of the IIJA uh federal program, so this is recurring thing. Uh, another big thing though I learned from this meeting was uh this, the, our state in that uh legislation identified funds for rural agencies and tribal for grant assistance. So there's a grant program, uh, and I, I think we would fall into that, so I'm going to be ready to apply for that later this month. And it's money for us to hire these quote-unquote con- uh experts, AKA consultants, to put together grant applications for us. So the state has a grant program for that. Also, the federal, there was money identified in the federal um program too for, for the very same thing. So I'm going to explore both of those options. Both of those come out later this month. We were warned that the federal program is like a first come, first served. It opens up and they were recommending all of us to be on our computers with the application filled out, just ready to s- click submit when it becomes open because, I mean, it's, it's like getting Taylor Swift tickets, they said. It's going to go out fast, so um. But it, it was just kind of nice to hear that, that eh, these grant programs and the application process is kind of forcing agencies like ours to rely on consultants that have dedicated staff to writing grants a- and knowing the ins and outs, but at least they're giving us some opportunities with funding to hire those consultants, so.
Mr. Chair, um, it, correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, but the heavy lifting on this RACE grant is already done. Now it's refreshing after we go through this, we'll call it the debriefing.
Yeah.
Freshening that up and then resubmitting, so I would say that, that uh we just keep doing this and take the advice of the government and.
Yeah.
Wish a change.
Yeah, I, actually uh Mary Guth, who worked on that application for us for WSB, was at this same workshop, so I was able to chat with her and she said that exact same thing. A lot of the heavy lifting was already done. So if we could set up something, I'd probably recommend maybe we invite her to sit in on that. It's probably going to require them to recalculate some things with updated numbers. Um, because the challenge is each year that you're denied, you push that construction year out a lot of times farther and with inflation costs and makes that benefit cost ratio um more difficult. So the farther out the project is, the more expensive it is, you hope your benefits increase as well, so.
All right, anything else, Chris?
No, that's what I had for update unless there's any other questions.
Great update.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Members, if it's okay with the rest, you would like to return back to uh Roxanne. Uh, I believe we probably have a gentleman here in regards to this item, so instead of moving on to human services.
I see Roxanne is uh with us online.
Roxanne, if you're there and ready to roll.
Okay, I have to figure out where my camera is on here. I apologize, I'm uh, I'm having to call in on this. Um, we have a rezoning request um for Clay Montgomery. He has forty-eight of parcels in um St. George Township. Uh, this parcel is at the intersection of Highway twenty uh five and Highway ninety-five. Um, according to the land use plan, this area is designated as rural service center. So it's an area that you're going to see resi- uh, excuse me, commercial uses primarily. And the reason being is that in nineteen ninety-nine, when they re-get the comprehensive plan, um, they, they essentially place um commercial areas, commercial nodes at the intersection of two major highways. And so without actually reviewing this area and seeing the amount of wetlands in it, it was designated as rural service center. So um, at that time, they rezoned it to, from agricultural to B-one, a commercial district. Um, but the request before you is to rezonate from B-one to rural service, which still complements the comprehensive plan. The rural service district would allow for very similar commercial uses with the one addition of allowing for uh single-family dwellings. And I think that kind of opens the door for this property, um, given that there's a significant swath of wetlands that flow through it. Um, I don't know if the applicant's there and wants to speak to the matter.
Okay. All right, any questions for Roxanne before we move on to the applicant? All right, if the applicant could please come to the podium and state your name and your address for the record and up to seeking.
My name's Kurt Weers. I'm with Pro Realty out of Howard Lake, Minnesota, um, seven-three-seven-one, US Highway twelve, Howard Lake. Um, I'm the real estate broker on this property. I have been for several years. Um, we've tried to se- sell it several times to different commercial entities. Um, and every time we've tried, you know, the, the wetlands have become an issue because they've had to be so far back from the highway. Um, and so we just kept continuing to try to sell it. And the seller came up with an idea, maybe try to sell it as a residential property, subject to change uh of the zoning. So we went ahead and put it up for sale that way and sold it in a day. So we have a purchase agreement on that property um, subject to this being changed. Um, we run into some issues with the highway department on approaches. They, you know, if we're going to do commercial there, they wanted two approaches and that kind of thing. There's not enough footage to even, to do that. Um, we sold off other parcels of land. Uh, they've gone residential and there's houses being built there now, so we just thought this was the best fit. They, they no longer need the property. They initially bought it. They were going to build a, a bin site there uh with a big grain leg and do that because of the highway frontage. And then as time went on, um, Clay's dad um had some issues because they, they raised the culvert and the drainage got changed, so things have changed there and it just doesn't work for that, that, you know, for commercial no more, so. So that's why we're asking for a change in zoning.
All right, any questions for Kurt? Before we move into a public hearing, any questions? All right, thanks Kurt.
Yep.
Uh, we'll open the public hearing if there's anyone here that wishes to speak on this item, for or against, general comments, questions, concerns? Anyone here at all, anyone online? Final call, public hearing? Uh, okay, public hearing is closed. Roxanne, were there any emails, letters or other communications to be read into the record?
No.
And have you received any comments or concerns from any state agencies, cities or townships on this item?
No, I, I did speak with MinDOT and they had no concerns with that. We actually spoke about a driveway location. Um, and they have approved driveway location at this time.
Okay, and then also any official action required by the township?
No.
Okay. All right, county board, I'll have time for discussion or questions for staff? What do you wish is?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to rezone the forty acres from B-one Business District to RS Rural Service District.
I'll second that. Any other questions, comments? We have a motion and a second for this rezoning. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it's carried. Thank you, Roxanne. Thank you, Kurt.
Thank you.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Too. Thank you for waiting for us. All right, I'm going to turn it over to the Human Services Board Chair, Commissioner Heinon.
Thank you. We'll call our other humans, we. We'll call to order the Human Services Board, uh, approve or amend the agenda. Bob, anything to add to no agenda? Board members, anything to add? If not, motion please.
Move to approve the agenda is presented.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Consent item number one and two, what would you like to do with that?
Move for approval, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Bob, one-time contract.
I'm going to have Nikki Knowlesky.
Come up and talk about that.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
This is just a one-time contract for Benton County with the Community Adult Mental Health Initiative. Um, just to, the grant came down for FMAP funding. I had applied to enhance technology for Benton County. So what I'm hoping to use this money for is to purchase a meeting owl, just to enhance hybrid meetings between staff and also we can use it for clients. Another purchase I'm hoping to do is to add a tablet for our outreach worker. Oftentimes she's out in the community using her own tablet or using her phone for clients to apply for benefits, apply for housing. So we're just going to, you have an iPad tablet for her to have out, so clients can use that alone.
Thank you, Nikki.
Motion to approve that contract.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item?
Seems like a no-brainer.
Certainly does.
I'm surprised they didn't have a tablet.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thanks for your efforts, Nikki, on that.
Thank you.
I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Bob?
I have nothing else unless I, nothing else.
Any questions? Any questions for Bob?
No.
Nope.
Great, thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Bob, Nikki. Have a good day.
With that, I'll adjourn the Human Serv- Services Board meeting and turn it back over to you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Heinon. All right, we're going to move on to commissioner meeting updates. Anybody that would like to start?
Sure, why not?
Okay.
Uh, a lot of meetings, just like everybody else. I went to the Shack meeting down in the cities. Very interesting meeting and pretty soon we started talking about wells and cemeteries.
Oh, wow.
Very interesting meeting. I'll have further discussion if you want some more clarification on that. Uh, another thing in front of you is a VIP date invitation for Career One. So if you don't know anything about Career Solutions and Career, Career One and what they all do. So if you don't know anything about Career Solutions and Career Career One and what they all do. It is uh Tuesday, July eleventh next week, and uh it's a good good opportunity to go there and showcase that. Other than that, besides our building meetings and the cows, that's all I had, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Commissioner Sluney?
Um I um had a. Let's see, with the Council on Aging, with um I- social isolation and loneliness uh workshop. And then the seventy-fifth anniversary for the Sewer Water Conservation District, that was about it.
Alright, thank you, Commissioner Pop.
Um let's see here, I had uh the BEP Board meeting on the twenty-second, um we didn't, the Executive Committee met and adopt the budget, which I missed because I didn't get the email. Um but yeah, basically, it's gonna be flat, what presented to there were um not spending any more money than what we get, we're taking in. Um there was quite a bit of concern that um the county paid a hundred percent of the money upfront last year in January. And that was the first time that that happened, otherwise they were paying it in January and July, I believe.
Yeah, so a long time ago, I think, when we had really low fund balances, with all of our outside agencies, we started paying it half in January and half in July. And it became apparent, we might as well save the time and money of of a second check.
Okay.
So we just started doing those in one.
So Amanda was gonna talk to you.
Was installed, and she wants it twice a year, we can.
Okay, well, it kinda screwed up her budgeting process, I guess, is what she had.
It didn't seem necessary to to split those up into two checks anymore.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I guess SWCD or you know, RSVP, we just started doing those in one check and don't.
And I know that that um they're gonna, we're gonna request the cow, um she has got tremendous amount of. Um projects going on and having a lot of trouble keeping up with the workload, so um and we didn't wanna add a a half of staff. Right now, we have the intern and we didn't wanna add a half of staff to the budget, so we wanna have a cow and see what what the county thinks about, what we should do here. Um we'd like some input from this board and from the budget process, because I think she has seventeen, if I'm not mistaken, pipeline projects and half of them are projects moving forward. Um and you know, they take a lot of time, uh she's got a couple that are from beyond moving forward to almost completion. And so and then she has to meet with all, you know, and she's kinda looking at the AIM or the paper mill project, having some work to do on that, so. It'd be something that we'll have to discuss and have a cow to see um where she should get more help, you know, we don't really feel we should probably. Increase membership right now in that, so. That was, it was quite lengthy a meeting and she had to present at St. Cloud State. Um the other part was I met last Tuesday with Roxanne and a kind of a disgrunted property owner in Benton County because. Um she's met with him before and she don't need to get beat up like that, so I came out to to meet with that property owner and she said it went really well. And then uh we had the Extension Budget Committee meeting and that they're gonna stick to the two-point-five percent random agreement. It does sound like, you know, that's coming forth from AMC is gonna present their or get the Miranda agreement ready for the for it be like the twenty-twenty-five through twenty-twenty-eight. And it already sounds like the University of Minnesota is gonna in request a pretty large increase in that Miranda agreement.
Okay.
So and that was all that I had.
Alright, Commissioner Pinsky?
Um outside of the cows and uh building and and obviously we had some updates on broadband and stuff, uh but I can leave that for you as the.
Alright, well.
Board Chair on that, but.
We actually have very good news about broadband, yeah, I've seen that now, that uh Benton Communications received their State Board of Board of Grant. So we're gonna step up and got a check for two million dollars to get this project done, so hats off to Commissioner Pinsky, the rest of the broadband committee.
The whole team.
There was a lot of work that went into that and actually I was thinking we may not hear until sometime this month, so it was refreshing to hear that news last week and. Looking forward to that happening, Commissioner Pop.
I got a question for you two, um it seems like from what you read, you know, I'm part of Benton Communication, that they're extremely successful in getting this, is that? Just me reading into it, or is that kinda the way it works?
They are and they they must have had a lot of confidence, because remember, our application was their only one.
Yep, uh but I mean, yeah, you.
So I mean, that's a big deal, because they put their hats in a ring that they were gonna get this.
Right.
So.
But I mean, you know, you look at my area, they got a big for, you know, big grant when they did my area up there, it just seems like they're constantly. And it seems like they get what they ask for, I don't know.
Well, I think a lot of it is comes down to what they ask for and how much they ask for and what the percentage that they're putting in.
Okay, remember their big, the big match, you know?
Yep.
Mm-hmm, so now it's uh kudos to them, our whole committee, all the way, I remember when we started this, how many years ago?
Right after we got on.
Yeah, so it's it's been a long road and I I still remember the people that were in the room right away when we got going. There was a lot of momentum, so thank everybody.
Be exciting to get the rest of the county built out, for sure.
The other meeting that I had um really was uh last Friday, our our uh uh Medical Services Board, uh I don't know if you, did you sit in on that or not?
I did for about five minutes.
Uh I'll tell you this, it was very, I will say it was one of the most frustrating meetings for me.
That's why, I'm an alternate, by the way, on that committee, so.
Uh I I'm just, I voiced my opinion and and until I voiced my opinion, it was pretty much quiet after the medical or the medical director gave his. Um like update and everything, they started one chart for fentanyl and everything like that at eighth grade. They said eighth, ninth, and then they went to eleventh and they showed.
Progression.
The progression, and I'm sitting here going, oh, is, are we reading this correctly? And then they got into the um the uh the Narcan and what it costs and. Now the whole state is, the whole country really is going to where you gotta provide Narcan to everybody, the 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 pharmacies, you name it. And it's free of charge, we're all paying for it, schools, school's gotta have at least two doses of Narcan in each school. And I I'm like, I just said, I don't wanna be the heartless one in the room here, but I gotta I gotta type one diabetic at home. And I couldn't imagine what these kids go through for families that don't have medical insurance or something like that, and they they don't even get the insulin to live right. Let alone, we're bringing people back multiple times with Narcan because of their choices. And once I said that, it lit the room up. And it, everybody jumped on it, Neil Galswick, he he went, really went off on everything and uh as you guys know, he's probably, or he is the new chair coming in for AMC. But but me and him were on the same board and or same 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 wavelength and and everybody took off after that.
Good discussion.
It was very good discussion and and o- obviously, it's not going anywhere, because we're very low on the uh the pecking order here, but uh but it. It's scary to know that we gotta provide all of this, all of this Narcan for people multiple times that choose to do this, but we can't provide. Things like insulin to people that are just trying to live.
Yeah.
So that's all I had.
Alright, thank you, just a couple of quick refreshes, I was uh sat in on the ditch one A uh joint meeting with Malax and Sherwood Counties. Couple weeks ago, they're just finishing up the redetermination benefits on that ditch, of course, our GLT cows, I was able to attend the monthly SWCD meeting, just. Very brief updates on the Rum River and the Mississippi Water Plan, and then also was able to attend their Soil and Water Conservation District's seventy-fifth anniversary, that nice little lunch. Good hot dogs and uh fresh cookies, so it was good. That's all I had, move into committee of the holes, Monte.
Okay. Cookies.
Uh first, we need to officially schedule the budget presentations, uh the board determined that should be August twenty-first, twenty-second, twenty-third. If we formally schedule those from eight to noon, uh each of those three days, I believe that's Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday that week, twenty-first, twenty-second, twenty-third. Uh next, I know we'd like to schedule a committee of the hole for highway to to review the draft five-year road program and discuss other highway-related issues. So Chris, do you have um any suggested dates for us, or?
Yeah, I'll assume it is, if possible.
Chris, would it make sense though to have that after our discussion, uh with um next era?
On the eighteenth?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I mean, it could, it potentially could be a long morning, because we have a regularly scheduled board meeting and then.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't uh phrase that right, not after that meeting, but after that day, so we have updates from next era.
Yeah, 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 that makes sense, I guess, so we wanna hear what their construction impacts are gonna be, so.
So then you're looking to we get twenty-fourth possibly then, do we get the twenty-fourth of July? Could do the twenty-fourth, how about Monday, the twenty-fourth?
Could we do eight-thirty, I don't know if I can get, do an eight o'clock, or eight-thirty or nine?
Either works for me.
Either works for, um I can make, uh yeah, I can make either work, could we set it at nine?
Sure.
O'clock.
So July twenty-fourth at nine, so road program and other highway issues.
Okay.
Okay, uh next is um, I've had a request in discussing with some board members, the desire to uh have a committee of the whole to discuss the. Human Services Data Analyst position and its organizational placement. Um so, uh.
We could do the same day.
Day, you wanna add it to the agenda on the twenty-fourth?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, that works, oh put those two together. Uh next, we need to schedule your next meeting with GLT Architects, I do have some dates that Evan has sent me. Um. You know, I would say we we try and limit this committee of the whole to just GLT, because those meetings seem to go quite a while. So here's what I have from from Evan. The seventeen, the seventeenth, that's a Monday, Monday, the seventeenth.
Jury duty that day.
Excuse me?
I'm called for jury duty.
Okay, well, let's move on then, um the twent- teth? The twentieth, that's the third, no, okay. Uh we are taking the twenty-fourth, the twenty-sixth or the twenty-seventh?
I I will, I I am traveling, so um I try and travel Wednesday through.
Of course, of course, yep, you bet, let's back up for a moment, good, so did I hear the seventeenth is not gonna work?
I will not be in town.
Okay, the seventeenth will not work, um I must have, did I skip over the nineteenth? He says the nineteenth in the afternoon, that is a Wednesday, unfortunately, nineteenth in the afternoon, okay. Well, um we're gonna have to then maybe just uh try try something on our own, um so let's see, here we said on the fifth. Um let's back up. Yeah, he didn't offer the tent, I don't wanna take a day he didn't offer, so.
What about the thirty-first?
Um you have Human Services cow that day already. On the thirty-first.
I don't have that on my calendar.
I don't have that on my calendar.
I don't have that on my calendar either.
We we do?
That's what I have on my calendar.
Thirty-first?
Uh I thought that was.
Is that the ten AM one up in the?
Yeah.
I have that on on August seventh.
What? Beth, you haven't, maybe my calendar is wrong, and so can you double check for me, please?
I got it on August seventh, too.
Okay, we may have moved that and I didn't change my calendar, okay, what do you got? Next Human Services cow.
Monday, August seventh.
August seventh, thanks for checking, okay, yeah, oh yeah, we must have moved that and I didn't take it off, alright, so how about the thirty-first then?
Mm-hmm, I know it's the start of the fair.
Uh yeah, I'm.
Fair starts Tuesday.
I'm scheduled for chicks that day, I don't know a time yet, so if it works for everybody else, I will do what I can do to.
In my opinion, it's it's extremely important for all five board members to be available, to to be able to attend.
My problem is, I just don't know the time yet.
Yeah, you won't know till that Wednesday before.
Right.
So so Commissioner Johnson, uh wha- what would be a safe start time then that would accommodate your chicks?
Yeah, I just don't know, I mean, I can request to have a later delivery, but I don't always get that. I I would say let's set it that morning and I'll see what I can do to move that schedule around.
So August thirty-first?
Yeah.
Would be, what would be a comfortable start time then, you gonna give us a little cushion?
Could we do nine o'clock in case I get the first delivery?
Yeah, cuz it's, what is it, seven-thirty?
Seven fifteen, and I could do both barns then, if nothing else.
Thirty-one at nine, okay.
Seven thirty-one at nine with GLT.
I'm sorry, July, July thirty-first at nine?
Yeah.
Okay. At nine, thanks, okay. You know, maybe also too is is we're contemplating um uh just kind of a photo op um for our our broadband. And uh I've talked to uh Cheryl at Benton Communications about doing this on July eleventh at ten. So if we wanna set that as a committee of the whole, certainly all board members would be welcome to to join for this this photo opportunity. I don't have a specific location, but for now, we could just say Ronaby, uh July eleventh at ten, uh Ronaby and. Uh Cheryl's gonna give me an exact location a couple of days beforehand, we can go and put that on the committee of the whole calendar.
Okay.
And uh that's it, Mr. Chair, oh wait, excuse me, excuse me, I've got a yellow folder here.
Thank you.
Uh let's put on the committee of the whole the Career One VIP Day, that's Tuesday at noon. Tuesday at noon, at the Career Solutions offices at St. Cloud Tech College on Northway Drive. If you're interested in going, if you could please let Beth know, um they do request RSVPs, if you're interested, no, and please let Beth know. And then also, um we need to schedule the next uh Years of Service Award Event, you know, when you all arrive about like seven, and I think we start at the Sheriff's Office, so. We'd like to propose. August fifteenth, August fifteenth. At seven, as the next um Years of Service Award Event. So August fifteenth at seven, we would start at the Sheriff's Office and then go from there.
Alright, I'm gonna move approval of the cows as listed.
And now we have them.
Uh July eleventh, Career One, twelve to two, July eleventh, Benton Communications photo op near the Ronaby location, July twenty-fourth, nine AM for road for co- uh road update. Five-year plan on uh hi- from Highway Department and also the Data Analyst position. On July thirty-first, GLT Architects here at nine o'clock, and August twenty-first, twenty-second, and twenty-third from eight to noon, budget discussions.
That's it.
Second.
Alright, motion second to approve the cows as those presented, any other comments, questions, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, it's carried, we are adjourned at ten oh four, we'll take a five-minute recess and we can fire up on ditch authority.
And Beth, I do like your little reminders about uh remember tomorrow, seven AM.
Yep, that's helpful.
Yeah. Yeah.